Good evening. I would like to call the Monday, July 24th, 2017 meeting of the Centerville Board of Education to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Beederman.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Dr. Rower.
Here.
Annie Self.
Here.
Mr. Schreier.
Here.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Here. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening.
Hold on a second.
Roll call, please, Mitch.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rower.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. I would like to ask the member, Annie Self, introduce to us the student representatives that are new addition to the Centerville Board of Education.
Good evening. Well, tonight, we're really excited to introduce our new student representatives to the Board of Education. This is going to be new for Centerville City Schools and the Board of Ed. We're going to try this for -- can you come up here? This is not new to boards of education across the country, but it is new to our school districts, so we're very excited. These three went through a pretty grueling application process. It was a formal application. They had to write, apply, and then they went through an interviewing process. All the candidates were wonderful. They all had amazing things to contribute, but these three, I have to say, all three of them came with kind of the same thing. They were very just bright, articulate. They all have the same common goals together, which I love about that. They're very well-connected within the district. They've been here pretty, I think, all of you since elementary have had two of them that have been here through John Hole, and then Sari came through freshman year, so she's been here for high school years. But they come with all kinds of things to offer, so I'm going to let them introduce themselves quietly. I'm going to be their mentor, but they're going to be working with all of us. Their goal is to get out into the district. They're really going to be a representative to their student body. We just sat back here for a while before the meeting, and I shared a few things with them, and I love to watch their faces when they learn new things. So we're going to pave the way, see how it goes, and this is our first year, so with that, I'll lead up to them.
Hi, I'm Sari Gunwarda, and I'm a senior this year, and like Mrs. Self said, I've been at Centerville since freshman year. And the main reason I wanted to be a part of the Board of, the student representative to the Board of Education was that I've always been interested in creating bills and debating and things like that in the extracurriculars that I do, but when I found out about this position, I realized that this was a chance to actually get into actual legislation and bills and resolutions that would actually make an actual impact in the school that I attend, and so I really wanted to be a part of that.
Hi, I'm Megan Rose, and I'm also a senior, and I'm looking forward to the experience in like local government specifically, because I've seen like higher-up governments, but I've never seen like getting involved in local government. And I'm also interested in seeing what the Board of Education actually does, because when Mrs. Self was showing us tonight, like where our actual like student fees go, I was amazed to see, because I had no idea that we paid all these fees, and then to actually see where they go and go to was very interesting to me.
Hi, my name's Elliot Ferso. I'm going to be a senior, and I basically joined because I see a lot of like kids that struggle in our school for like various reasons, and I just want to like connect with them and understand why they're struggling, and then we can go further. I'm sorry. What do you know?
You're fine. You're fine. You're fine. Can you tell if you play soccer?
Hmm?
Do you want to play soccer?
Yes, I do play soccer, and I'm active in various clubs and yeah.
You did a great job. Thank you. Thank you, guys. On behalf of the Board of Education, we welcome you. Next on the agenda is the Board of Education report. We have a legislative report from Mr. Schreier.
Thank you, Mrs. Osterhage. I have two brief reports tonight of, the first one on the biennial budget, an update on that, and secondly, some pending House activity. Late in the evening of June 30th, Governor Kasich acted on amended substitute House Bill Number 49, which is the biennial budget legislation for fiscal years 2018 and 2019. Prior to signing the bill, the governor used his line item veto authority on 47 different provisions with several impacting primary and secondary education. Prior to signing the bill, the Ohio School Boards Association, Buckeye Association of School Administrators, and Ohio Association of School Business Officials submitted a letter to the governor requesting vetoes of three provisions contained in House Bill 49. Unfortunately, the governor did not veto any of their requested provisions. Following the governor's vetoes, our associations sent a letter to the Ohio House of Representatives and to the Ohio Senate asking that they consider overriding for the vetoes specifically impacting local schools. On July 6th, the Ohio House returned to session and did override some of the governor's vetoes, but none of those vetoes involved K- to 12 education. As far as House activity, the Ohio House passed Senate Bill 8 by a vote of 97 to 0. This legislation would require that the Ohio School Facilities Commission establish a program to help school districts purchase technology and make alterations to improve technology, infrastructure, and school safety and security. The bill also would allow districts that received funding from the Emergency Assistance Fund to be eligible for the program as long as they have not received funds through the Ohio School Facilities Commission, Facilities Classroom Assistance Program. The bill now heads to the Senate for consideration of the amendments made in the House. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreier. Next on the agenda is a request for a future special board work session. As a follow-up to our last work session, it would be my suggestion that we add an additional work session for the board. I would like to propose, if you can, if you have your calendars with you, that's good. I'd like to propose that perhaps we meet on the evening of Wednesday, August the 2nd, if you could, if you could check your calendars. Does anybody, Mr. Schreier will not be available? Nor will Dr. Rower. Can we look at Thursday? Or have you gone for a period of time?
I'm going. Whatever.
Okay. How about you, Dr. Rower? Okay. Would it be okay for us to work on establishing the date? Our next board meeting is not, the work session's not until the 21st, and I, we look likely need the meet sooner than that.
No, this one's here.
This Wednesday, the 26th? I'm not available, but that does, but that's okay.
I'm not available. That's a big deal, but there's Thursday, 27th.
All these busy people. Thursday works for me. Annie?
I don't think I will.
We're not doing very well. Dr. Henderson, what I'd like to do is if you can work with me to find a date that will work for everybody, and then we can just record and certainly make that date available to the public with the proper agenda, proper notice and proper agenda.
Sure.
Okay. That was a great attempt to get busy people together.
Yeah.
And next on the agenda is the hearing of the public. The Board of Education provides this as a convenient opportunity for the public comment before any official action is taken. I'd like to know if there's anybody with us this evening who would like to address the board, and if so, you're requested to come to the podium to speak to the board, to provide your name and your address, and then to limit your comments to no more than three minutes. The board will certainly listen, but generally chooses not to engage in discussion or dialogue. Matters requiring follow-up are directed to Dr. Henderson as a superintendent, and of course, individual board members can be contacted at any time to set an appointment or there can be written correspondence mailed to the board. Is anybody interested in speaking to us this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dustin Huber. My address is 300 East Dixon Avenue in Oakwood, Ohio, and tonight, I'd like to discuss hiring experienced teachers. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Superintendent Henderson, fellow parents and community members, thank you for your time. Again, my name is Dustin Huber. I'm the active duty service member, as you can see, and my wife's a school teacher. So early on in our careers, we thought that this would be a perfect match, and that I was, we knew that I was going to have a very mobile career, and that we knew the teachers were going to be in high demand wherever we went. And it's really helped that she's a phenomenal teacher. I like to brag anyway, but I think that her resume kind of speaks for itself. She's a National Board Certified, Masters in Reading Instruction, highly skilled, highly specialized in both elementary and special education. I don't know why not, but the key point is that she's been actually teaching now for, this will be her 19th year. So she's a first grade teacher in Urbana Elementary, about an hour and a quarter north here, and loving her job, and it's funny that that's, but that's really one of the reasons I've been starting to come to the local boards, to discuss the quandary that we're now, because as I look to grow up and leave the military and settle and grow roots in the community, we're finding that it's actually hard for her to find a position here local in Dayton Public within the consortium. We've been here for two years, and we've been applying to local districts the entire time, and have gotten nowhere, no interviews, not even getting slept in the screening process. So I actually went to a principal, a local principal, and I asked finally, I said, "What's our, what is our problem?" So she looked at her resume and says, "I can tell you right off the bat, she's got too much experience. We only hire people with three to four years of experience." Now, I was a principal in another district, and I've since talked with Dr. Henderson, who says that generally, generally, you look at experienced teachers of up to about seven years, but of course, that's, I mean, we're talking 19 years. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm not here in bed for a job for my spouse, hiring season's over, right? So I'm just here to request for the board, the superintendent, to encourage your administrators to consider giving teachers with significant experience equal footing when it comes to applying for available positions. I know that teachers that have a lot of experience cost more money than teachers just out the door college, and as a government employee, I absolutely understand your role as good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. But I would ask you to consider a couple of things. One, what's the cost in experience? We can't put a dollar value on that, but again, as a spouse of a school teacher, I can tell you, it's, it's cost to the students, it's cost to the school, to the district. And then the other thing I would say is, in every district we've been to, we have seen issues where it's, we don't identify ineffective teachers until they're well-asked probationary periods established with collective bargaining agreements. So I guess the last question I have to the board, to the superintendent, to the parents in the community, is why not give teachers who have already demonstrated effectiveness and high quality of work in other districts a chance to improve the quality of education for Centerville's students? Thank you for your time again.
Thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda, we have, I should say, is there anybody else who would like to speak to us this evening? Okay. And next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Henderson?
Thank you, Mrs. Osterhage. I'm going to invite Laura Collier, our Director of Student Services, to the podium. She's going to present some information about the new House Bill 140 in regards to truancy.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Henderson had shared, I'm here tonight to share information about House Bill 410, which deals with truancy in the district. This is a bill that was enacted by the state government, and all school districts across the state of Ohio will be enacting this bill this school year. The law has changed in, from terminology which used to be chronic absenteeism to now it's called habitually truant. In the definition the state has provided to us on students who are habitually truant are students who have missed 30 or more unexcused consecutive hours, 42 hours in a month, or 72 hours in a school year. In Centerville City Schools, excused absences include things as absences covered by a doctor's note, death or dying of a family member, trips out of the country or vacations approved by the principal, religious holidays, or calling absences for illnesses up to seven days. Some of the timelines that are put into effect by this House Bill include when a student's reaching the threshold for being considered habitually truant, which would be when they're missing 38 hours of unexcused time in a month, or 65 hours in a school year. The school will be responsible to send a letter or contact families. This is nothing new. We would be contacting families about concerns about absences already. What's different about this is now when they continue to have, children continue to have unexcused absences, the schools require to send a legal notice to the family along with an invitation to what's called a truancy intervention meeting. At the truancy intervention meeting, it's a gathering of people who are familiar with the child, including the principal and our attendance officer. At that meeting, we're to establish possible causes for the absenteeism, and then to problem solve as a team of how the attendance will be improved. If the attendance of the child doesn't approve, upon the 61st day after that truancy plan is developed, the district is required to file truancy charges against the family at that time. Are there any questions? Yes.
How many hours in the day do you count? Is it six, seven?
Six and a half.
Six and a half. Calling absences due to illness up to seven days, those do not need a doctor's excuse?
Those do not.
So they could be out for seven days calling in, and then on top of that, then we start the 30-plus hours?
Yes, correct. Correct. That is correct. Any other questions? And if there's a prolonged illness and there's a physician's note attached to that, then those are all excused.
And if I, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The legal notice that you're serving, what does that involve?
It's basically a letter. It's, it's to have legal notice across the top of it, but it's an additional letter, and we have to make sure that the parents have received that. So one thing that I didn't state here, too, there, we have to have three documented attempts to get the family into that truancy intervention meeting. If they don't show at the meeting, then we have seven days to get that plan to them. So it'll involve our attendance officer going out to homes and delivering that plan to the family as well. And everything will be recorded in EMIS, our student information system, based around this bill.
All right. The seven days calling, is that total for the year, or is that per illness?
Per illness.
So they can go seven days, come to school one day, one day, and then call?
We would be, if we're going to use discretion with those situations. We have the, that's the leniency that Centerville is putting into place, because in essence, what the House Bill is asking us to do is they don't differentiate between excused and unexcused. We had some situations this past year with students who had various illnesses that I would not want to be sending, hounding them about their child's attendance, because we knew the situation behind that. Any other questions?
Can I do tell, tardy hours? Could we, could yes?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have the Treasurers' report. Mr. Beederman.
We closed the books on another financial year on June 30th, 2017, and I would like to take a few moments to highlight some revenue and expense information with the next two slides, followed by two charts that will help visualize how disappointing our state funding has been and will continue to be moving forward. Actual year-end revenue was below the original estimate from last September by $1 million, mainly due to lower-than-expected real estate collection and the delay in collecting special education tuition reimbursement through the state. In May, the revenue, in May, the revenue budget was revised, reduced the estimate of reimbursement through the, the real estate collection was reduced by $621,000, but at that time, we were still expecting to receive the tuition payment before closing the books at June 30th. Actual general revenue for the year was ultimately $266,000 below the May estimate due to not receiving the tuition reimbursement payment during the fiscal year. Overall total revenue was still only 0.3% under the revised May estimate at fiscal year-end. We have since received $462,000 for the special education tuition reimbursement, which if we would have received that timely, would have made the overall revenue exceed the revised May estimate by $196,000 for the year. On the expense side, actual general fund expenses for the year were well below the original expectations. Services and supplies expenses are made up of mostly departmentalized budgets, and historically, we haven't reduced them during the year, even if they're running well below budget. In May, the budget was increased for the purchase of land and reduced for lower-than-expected benefits expenses. At year-end, the land was still not purchased, so without that included in the revised estimate, expenses were 1.9% under budget, which represented $1.7 million below the budget for the year. Revenue did exceed our expenses by $4.5 million for the year, which means our district did not have to dip into any cash reserves. This will help delay the need for a future operating levy. The state budget was signed by the governor, and once again, Centerville Schools was not held financially. In the state estimate, we are projected to receive $360,000 more next year than lose $312,000 the following year. This continues to be very disappointing, an area of our revenue collection, because this means we'll be flat funded moving forward into the next biennial budget in two years. This chart shows when applying inflationary trends, we will receive significantly, significantly less funding in 2019 as compared to 15 years ago in 2004, with a high of $16.9 million in 2004, $11.8 million in 2013, and an estimated $13.3 million in 2019. It's also important to point out that state funding only represents 13.5% of the Centerville School District pot. As another way of looking at state funding, this chart shows that only 17% of the Ohio income tax reported from our community in 2015 to the Ohio Department, the state of Ohio, I'm sorry, to the state of Ohio, was sent back for education, which again, only makes up 13.5% of our district's general fund budget. This concludes my report, unless there are any questions from the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Beederman. Any questions? The next several items will be taking, taken into consideration and voted on by the board fairly quickly. These are all items that have been deliberated by the board in previous work session discussions. First, we have the Treasurers' recommendations. Consider approving the June 2017 financial statements, monthly financial report, fund activity report appropriations, general funding spending report, general fund summary, general fund summary again. POs included in statement number seven, approved by administration then and now, certified by the Treasurer, and supported by board resolution totaling $149,997.70.
So moved.
Roll call, please, Mitch.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rower.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Consider approval of the federal grant advances totaling $16,028.16 from the general fund in return to the general fund upon receipt from the Ohio Department of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Beederman.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rower.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Consider approving the minutes of the regular Board of Education meetings, June 26, 2017, regular meeting, July 17, 2017, special meeting.
So moved. Okay.
Roll call, please, Mr. Beederman.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rower.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. The superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. The superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated persons listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff persons listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the persons listed on Schedules, on Schedule D for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments.
So moved. Target.
Roll call, please, Mr. Beederman.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rower.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. The superintendent recommends the employment of the persons listed on Schedule D-1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Stand.
Dr. Rower.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Consider approving the Centerville High School fees for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Beederman.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rower.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Consider approving the middle elementary and K-1 building fees for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Beederman.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rower.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Consider approving bus routes for the 2017-18 school year with authorization for the supervisor of transportation to adjust routes when necessary.
Okay.
Roll call, please, Mr. Beederman.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rower.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes. Consider approving Liberty Mutual, the recommended carrier for fleet, property, and liability insurance, effective July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, with permission for the administration to make adjustments for fleet and property acquisitions during the premium year.
So moved.
Target.
Roll call, please, Mr. Beederman.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rower.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes.
Madam President, before we go to that, could the superintendent explain to the community about the bus routes and why we can't, how much sort of years ago like we used to, so they can understand why we don't do that?
Absolutely, Mr. Dahl. Years ago, we had a local community paper here, and we would actually put those in. It was called the Centerville Bellbird Times, and just with the different things that are going on in the world today, we worried about the safety of our students going and reporting to bus stops, and over the years, we've modified and kind of evolved to a process where all that information's been kept confidential. So we evolved to, to a process where we mailed postcards, then we evolved to a process where we would actually have parents call in and could get the information that way, and now parents can actually log in electronically to what's referred to as a home access center and actually see the bus route, pick-up time, and the times that the students will be dropped off at the end of the school day. Again, it's with a private password that they log into with, and so it's very secure. So again, it's for all students' safety to keep that. The interesting thing about when we used to mail the postcards is because our transportation staff is continually making adjustments all the way up to the first day of school, in many cases, by the time we would mail those postcards and give their, give time for the US mail to deliver those home, they were almost outdated by the time we mailed them. So the process we're using now is in real time, and it works pretty well for us.
And more secure.
And more secure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
And our last item, consider resi- And our last item, consider a resolution to move into executive session pursuant to Ohio revise codes 121.22G1 and 121.22G2 for the purpose of discussing the employment of an employee and the purchase of land. No further action will be taken by the board at the conclusion of executive session except to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please, Mr. Biederman?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Annie Self?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
And Mrs. Osterhage?
Yes. Thank you.